Half a day, thank you everyone for being here. The Committee on Education, Self-Determination and Historic Preservation, Infrastructure, Border Safety, Federal and Foreign Affairs, and Maritime Transportation will now convene this virtual public information hearing. Virtual public hearing correction. Today is Tuesday, October 5th, 2021, and it is currently 3:02 in the afternoon. For the record, and in accordance with the open government law, public notices were sent out via email to all senators, stakeholders, and all main media broadcasting outlets, Tuesday, September 28th, 2021, and the second notice on Friday, October 1st, 2021. Notice of today's hearing was also available on the Guam Legislature's website. Joining me today are the Acting Vice Speaker and Legislative Secretary Senator Shelton. Thank you for joining us, and we also have Senator James Moylan, the former minority leader. Before we proceed with the public hearing, the legislature has general rules of conduct that must be followed. All must abide by these rules of conduct and quality assurance standards. One, please keep your video on at all times and ensure you are in a room with little interruptions and adequate lighting, specifically to make sure the participant's face is visible at all times. The host of this hearing will mute you, will mute all participants until called upon by the chair, and when you are called to speak, please ensure that your microphone is unmuted. If you would like to speak, you can go ahead and do so indicating within the in-app feature chat box right here on the bottom. And those that are testifying will first be recognized by the chair before speaking, and will state your name for the record, for record-keeping purposes. After all testimony is received, I will open up any questions or comments by the senators on the panel to those giving testimony. And questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or motive of anyone testifying or of any senator is not permitted. Any violations of this general rule of conduct will result in removal from the hearing by the host. Today's public hearing will provide discussions on Bill Number 163-36COR and Bill Number 151-36COR. We will start first with Bill Number 163-36COR, Senator, which is sponsored by Senator Moylan, Talina Cruz Nelson, Amanda Shelton, Mary Camacho Torres, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, which is an act to add a new subsection 57109 to Chapter 57 of Title X, Guam Code Annotated, relative to designating Guam Public High Schools as sites for students to apply for a Guam identification card. Senator Moylan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the attendance here today. I'm really looking forward to the testimony and comments you have on this bill. And as you know, what we're looking at for this bill is helping the students obtain their Guam ID cards. This idea of the measure that formed into the bill came about from principals and students asking for assistance. The idea by providing the assistance with the help of Department of Education and the partnership with Department of Revenue and Tax came from you folks out there. And we understand that the ID will be very helpful upon graduation to help these new graduates obtain jobs or go further with their education by having some sort of identification. And what the teachers have been telling us and what they have seen from their students is that there's a problem for many students now in obtaining the most simplest form of identification, which is the Guam ID, not the driver's license, but the Guam ID. Some of the problems associated in getting that ID as well, some folks have difficulty, the students have difficulty gaining transportation from their families to go to Department of Revenue and Taxation to pick up that ID. There's also costs associated with getting an ID card as well. So we were looking at solutions, and that's how this bill came about. Possibly, we can have the Department of Education assist by helping the students complete the forms or having the forms there at the schools, but with the assistance of the teachers too, to help do this. Maybe this bill also suggests removing the fee, because we understand once a new student is out there with a graduating certificate and has their ID and is ready, can get a job, well, these are our next people in the workforce that adds to our economy in the forms of taxes and circulating the money. So there are a lot of good reasons that we feel could help with this bill by helping the students obtain their Guam ID card. There's going to be some coordination necessary with Department of Revenue and Taxation and then the Education Department as well, to make sure we follow all the rules and regulations set forth in this. We did speak to DRT, and they had some ideas and suggestions as well. And they also made us aware of that this Friday, I believe, they're going to be launching online access for these ID cards, driver's licenses, to include Guam IDs. But there's also further assistance that we can provide in this bill or we'd make some changes to the bill to make it go across even smoother. So with your help with this public hearing, we'll be able to make sure this bill is the best one to move forward to help the students of Guam. So I thank you, Madam Chairman, and I'm looking forward to the statements we have from our panel today. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Moylan. At this time, I'd like to recognize as a superintendent here, okay, he's not on. Our curriculum, Mr. Joe Sanchez, our deputy superintendent, Mr. Joe Sanchez, and then, oh, and then the superintendent, John Fernandez. Superintendent, would you like to give testimony at this time on this bill?
Yes, I would, and first of all, just let me thank you and thank all the sponsors of the bill for introducing it and for working with our high school administrators to get ideas and also for checking with me. I know Senator Moylan called me just to give me a heads up and let me know what was coming, just in case there was any issue or concern with the bill. So I would just like to testify submitted. I hope you do have it. We sent earlier a copy of written testimony. And basically, we do agree with the sponsors' position that possession of a valid Guam ID is essential for our high school students and graduates in order for them to be able to access opportunities for employment, for higher education, and for other benefits and necessities associated with becoming a full member, adult member of our community. Removing barriers to access for those who would like a Guam ID is good public policy, and Bill 163 proposes to do this by allowing for the application and receipt of the Guam ID in any of our public high schools. And of course, I think more importantly, to waive the associated fees. Having said this, you know, we do want to work closely. The bill does, you know, in addition to authorizing for the schools to participate in the application and the, you know, processing of the ID, we do, we did see the language requiring DRT to work with DOE to work out the process for doing this. And so I did have a conversation with our Director Shimizu. I understand that they are moving to automate the Guam ID application process. So I think that's definitely going to help with the implementation of this bill and making it easier for us to administer as well. So we look forward to that. However, we also know that, you know, with any type of program like this, there will probably be a lot of need for guidance, staff support to deal with questions, clarifying the processes, getting the right paperwork submitted. And so we're really going to want to sit down with DRT to make sure that we coordinate our efforts and take advantage of their, you know, expertise and support to be able to take care of those functions. Even though we do want to support the bill, as you know, we don't have the luxury of being able to pile additional responsibilities on our school administrators and our staff. So DRT support in this effort is critical, and, you know, we work very well with Director Shimizu. So we look forward to sitting down with her and going through the process of outlining a process that works for both agencies, and most importantly, for our students. We still know that even though the ID will be administered, applied for through the schools, you know, there is still a lot that goes into being able to provide the right documentation in order to meet the requirements for the ID. So again, both agencies will need to work closely so that our kids don't get lost in the process. And anything we can do to make it simpler and straightforward and affordable, we applaud that, and we thank you for your support, and we look forward to working with DRT should this bill be passed into law. So I see those, Masi, and that's my testimony as submitted for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. We did receive your testimony. Mrs. Gutierrez, our GDOE board member, is there any comments you would like to make? Or we did not receive any testimony, but if there's something that you'd like to say?
Yes, thank you, Senator Nelson. You know, I received this notice of hearing on last Thursday, and I noticed that it was filed, the bill was filed in July 2021. Unfortunately, I was in the hospital, and I never got access to any of my iPad or laptop, and then I left for my surgery. So I was able to get the iBox. It was actually their introduction meeting that I said, you know, there's a bill, and I noticed that, you know, it has to do with students. And I'm very sensitive when it comes to the students. So I don't know if the principals have discussed this with their student leaders at their school. So right away, I sent, I forwarded this bill out to the iBox representative, and one of them was a member of the youth congress from 2018 to December 2020. So she's very familiar with bills. So I asked her if she wanted to take the lead, and yes. And then we came in with the other iBox that have already had some of their comments on the pros and the cons. So I just wanted to be able to turn this over, because this is their students, and I wanted to make sure that, and I asked for your consideration, that it's not that they're saying they don't support the bill, but there's clarification that they need. They're all seniors, they're going to graduate. But they have, they're also thinking of the other students, okay? So I'd like to introduce and please hear them out and just consider their, whatever they're asking for clarification or concern. And the first one I have is Sophie Nocifranca. She's the chair of the iBox from JFK. And I have the vice chair Grace De La Cruz from Simon Sanchez. Then the former member of the youth congress and representing now GW on the iBox is Kyla Trinidot. So I would like to turn this over to them for you senators to hear them out. I know they read the superintendent's testimony, but they have already prepared their own to present it to you this afternoon. So thank you, Senator Nelson and Senator Moylan, and all the authors of the bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gutierrez. Okay, we'll call on our iBox chair, Sophie. Go ahead and state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Sophie Nocifranca, and as stated, I am the current chairwoman for iBox School Year 21 to 2022. And thank you, Senator Talina Nelson, for introducing me. So half a day, honorable senators. Once again, my name is Sophie Nocifranca, and I am a member of the public and the current chairwoman for the Islandwide Board of Governing Students for School Year 21 to 2022. As a member of the public, I testify in support of Bill 163. Once again, thank you for an opportunity to offer testimony in favor of Bill 163, as it is an act to add a new chapter in the Guam Code Annotated, relative to designated Guam Public High Schools as sites for students to apply for the Guam ID. An act of benefit for securing a future for young students. This act will definitely broaden the prospects of employment for youth and future leaders of the community. It is undeniable that allowing accessibility to students for legal documents will allow for greater, brighter opportunities as they prosper into adulthood. The application process for any identification record is lengthy and extensive, undermining an individual's attempts to acquire it. Ergo, the benefits outlined by this bill will definitely support a student's future. However, there are propositions in this bill that need to be addressed. As delineated in the bill, a designated employee of the school will assist through picking up the ID. If personnel of DOE are employed for these processes, will offices or areas of the school be designated to these workers and be overall sites for Guam IDs outside of DRT? In other words, will this allow for expansion of Department of Revenue and Taxation outside of the current main site? And additionally, in correspondence to complying with all the laws, rules, regulations, confidentialities, and procedures governing the conduct in the application process, it is not specified who is employed for handling these confidential documents, which are essential to a citizen's future and security. Furthermore, the schedule of entering this application process within the school is not outlined, whether it may interfere with regular school hours or request for students to procure their confidential documents to bring to school with them. Ergo, if this application process does indeed interfere with regular school hours, students will have the responsibility of bringing their important legal documents with them among the student population. This invites the risk of identity theft or losing possession among these documents in a circumstance they are misplaced or stolen. Ergo, a question that I have is, will the school or student population or just the student take accountability for these risks and issues if the situation occurs? And that is currently all my questions for today. Thank you for the opportunity to present testimony and questions regarding Bill 163. Thank you again.
Thank you, Sophie, for your testimony. Grace, go ahead and state your name for the record, and then you can proceed with your testimony.
My name is Grace De La Cruz, and I, along with Sophie Nocifranca, I support the purpose of Bill 163-36. As a student myself, I recognize the importance of having a Guam ID as it does play an important role in our lives, especially...
Grace, can you speak into the mic a little bit more? I think we're all having a little bit difficulty hearing you.
Is this better?
Yes, much better. Thank you.
Okay, I will. Hi, good afternoon. My name is Grace De La Cruz, and I am the vice chair of this year's iBox. I, along with Sophie Nocifranca, support the purpose of Bill 163-36. As a student myself, I recognize the importance of having a Guam ID as it does play an important role in our lives, especially as we approach adulthood. There are some concerns that we have to address, such as the possibility of hiring and training more staff than already at DRT and making sure that the students are not disrupted if we chose to operate these services during school hours and just to make sure that the students are aware of the process as we establish. But I am confident that GDOE and the Department of Revenue and Taxation can make this operation successful with proper planning and attention to detail. It may seem a bit complicated at this point in time, but I believe that the intention of the bill will benefit the youth in the long run and better prepare them for life after high school. In addition to that, I do have a few questions as well. I'll just read off of my notes here. When we apply for Guam IDs, there is the option to make it into like a real ID, which is used for federal identification. I was wondering if that will still apply even if we give it to the schools to take care of it, because I know the process is longer and there's a lot of additional costs that go along with that. So if that option is still available, I just wanted to double-check on it. Also, since the bill states that parents will be relieved of advising their children, does that mean that they can just sign off on the application? Or would they have to still be present during the submission or any of the following steps, even if it was at the school branch? And will each school have a designated area for people applying? And this question only relates to if it is operating during school hours. Aside from those questions, I really think it's a great idea. I support the cause because I'm aware of the conditions at the Department of Revenue and Taxation, and it is a struggle for students, especially me. I was one of those students who were trying to get, not necessarily an ID, but I was in that line, so I understand how beneficial this can be in helping students have better access to getting the identification that they need. That is all for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Grace, for your testimony. You know, it's a huge encouragement for us adults to see the youth really engaging in a lot of the things that we are doing today. You know, it takes an enormous amount of courage and also an enormous amount of preparation. So I really appreciate your testimonies. They added a different perspective, and I'm sure Senator Moylan appreciates your testimonies as well. Is there anyone else that would like to give testimony on Bill 163-36?
Senator...
Oh, okay. Who did you say it was, Mrs. Gutierrez?
Kyla Trinidot. This is the other one there.
Oh, okay, there you are. Okay, Kyla, sorry. You're in the second panel of the Zoom. Okay, so Kyla, please go ahead and proceed. And then after that, Mr. Deputy Superintendent Sanchez will call on you, okay?
Half a day, everyone. Is my mic clear? Just to make sure that everyone can hear me great.
Yes.
Okay. Half a day, everyone. My name is Kyla Trinidot. I am representing George Washington High School in the Islandwide Board of Governing Students. I support this bill along with my colleagues, as I do believe that it does provide, you know, the, I'm sorry. I support this bill as it does, I'm sorry, it's the ability to obtain a Guam ID that can be used in a multitude of different situations. I personally know a few of my friends have never gotten their Guam ID yet until maybe two months ago. And I think that this bill could really change that. It can give the students the opportunity to have a Guam ID within high school before they graduate. Adding on to what Grace and Sophie mentioned, I had another question as to who this designated employee of the school will be. Is this person certified to handle such sensitive information? And how they provided the equipment to do such job? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Kyla, for your testimony. Deputy Superintendent Sanchez?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. I actually wasn't going to say anything. I was just going to have the superintendent, but I just wanted to share some kind of recent experiences with some of our students that we've tried to help get jobs. And I know the high schools experience this more often than we do down here at Central, but it was surprising that so many students who are already even 18, 19-year-olds do not have identification. And even when they do get job prospects and, you know, are trying to be hired for, I'll say legit jobs, you know, at companies or organizations, getting ID is very challenging, especially when you turn 18. For the 16-year-olds and 15-year-olds, it seems easier because they can go with their parents, and their parents can provide all that information. But once you turn 18 and the parent no longer has that kind of help over the child or the student trying to get those documents, and it's kind of weird, like you need ID to get documents in order to get ID. You know, I mean, it's quite a challenge when you're going out to other agencies to do that. And what, it also has a kind of a long-term effect for some of these young folks. When they don't have their IDs, they're actually forced to work jobs that are kind of under the table. I mean, people, you know, whether it be construction, whether it be stores, whether it be private companies that are willing to hire them, but they, you know, they kind of make deals where, okay, we'll hire you, but we have to pay you in cash or, you know, which means technically they're not working because you can't, you know, you're not filing taxes and all of those things. So really, getting them an ID as, you know, when they're younger, when they're minors, or even when they're 18-year-olds, and then having them keep that is going to be very, very helpful in the long run. And having it done at the schools is something that I think just makes sense, because we're already, you know, we're already turning into job placement, you know? I mean, that's not kind of a primary theme for us, but I know a lot of schools have already extended some of the assistance to not just college placement, but also helping them with applications and, you know, filling them out and going to job fairs and things like that. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Is there anyone else that would like to give testimony on Bill 163? Okay, hi, Principal Messnayan. Please proceed.
Hello, thank you. This is, I'm Carla Messnayan, and the principal of Simon Sanchez High School. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to provide testimony for this bill. Before I proceed, I do want to say that I am in support of the bill. Just this whole experience with the pandemic, even when we first shut down as an island, we've had several requests from students who, you know, because they haven't been on campus and they need to file paperwork for federal agencies, that they were asking us if we could make them an ID card, right? But we couldn't do that. So we felt really bad that we were in that situation. And imagine they're applying for federal assistance or they're applying for a particular job. They don't have Guam IDs. And now that the schools are slowly infusing activities to help prepare students for college or post-secondary college or even to, you know, get ready for the world of work, one of the basic things that they do need, as Deputy Joe Sanchez had mentioned, is that an ID. In my school, our demographics itself show that we have very many kids that ride the bus. They don't necessarily provide their own transportation. They don't have driver's license. So if we were to give them this help in applying for a Guam ID at the school site, maybe it'll encourage them, you know, or open up doors for them to apply for jobs. Or the next step is look for what other assistance they can apply for. So I am in support of this bill. I do want to make note, though, you know, DOE does a lot of things already, right? I really don't want this particular bill, if it passes, to become an avenue where the department or the schools become a one-stop center, right? We want it to be an activity where, you know, there will be follow-through and not just, okay, I have a Guam ID. We want it to be part of an activity wherein we help them transition into the real world, you know, that there is follow-through with this. So again, thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to testify. And again, I am in support of the bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Messnayan. Actually, I was thinking this is going to be in another additional duty for the principals. No, we don't want that. Okay, I'd like to recognize Senator Ada for joining us, and Senator Tidwe, thank you for being here. Is there anyone else that would like to give testimony on the bill? Bill 163-36? Okay, seeing that there's no one, I'll now open it up to my colleagues if they have any questions for those giving testimony. Senator Ada, do you have any questions at this time?
No questions, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Senator, Acting Vice Speaker Senator Amanda Shelton?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thank you to the panel for being here today. Mrs. Gutierrez from the board and the iBox members, as well as the superintendent and deputy superintendent and our principals who are here. Thank you for your input on this bill. I think when I saw it from Senator Moylan, I was really excited about it because I remember when I was in high school and trying to get my first job, I needed to get a Guam ID, and it was kind of a difficult process for me even back then. And it required my mom to take off time from work to take me to the records and ID office. I think back then at Teetzen, it took a big part of her day. And, you know, it was an inconvenience to her, but still a valuable learning experience for me to see as a young lady applying for my ID and learning the process of getting documents and doing those kinds of government things. But I think this is really valuable to our students in the Department of Education, especially with the very long lines at the Department of Revenue and Taxation right now. And I appreciate the input from DOE to know that we're interested in having the Department of Revenue and Tax to come to the table because there are lots of different issues that were brought up here today. I think one that I was most... there are lots of different issues that were brought up here today. I think, um, one that I was most concerned about is, uh, the, the safety of, uh, everyone's information, the students bringing their documents to school as well and giving, uh, giving the Department of Revenue and Taxation the resources, as well as the Department of Education, the resources to carry, uh, to carry out this new assignment, uh, to make, uh, government IDs more accessible to our students. And so I think we have some questions to answer here and, uh, from the Department of Revenue and Taxation, but I appreciate everyone's input and I really look forward to to seeing this come to fruition and, uh, helping our students, uh, gain access to these identification cards to, uh, help them, uh, ease their way into, uh, the working world and, uh, use it for, uh, different things, whether it be for, uh, traveling or working or, um, uh, going to school or sports activities when an identification card is needed. I think it's really important and uh, I'm excited about this and looking forward to more input from our community. So, thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Acting Vice Speaker. Senator Moylan? Do you have any comments or would you like to close on this bill?
Uh, sure. I, well, I appreciate it and then I can roll it into a close also. We, um, these are excellent points that, um, you folks have made. I, I thank you for putting in the good thought of how to, uh, ensure that this is a workable process, uh, for, uh, for the Department of Education and how we can work that in, uh, for, uh, with the Department of Revenue and Taxation. Uh, for, for example, you know, when I mentioned on how this bill got started, your, your instructors were really passionate about, uh, of course, they get your diploma, right? But they're most passionate about what you're going to do next. Uh, they know this would take some time away from their daily duties, but they want to ensure that at least you have the opportunity when you graduate with your diploma that you can go someplace and work. And that's important to have an ID card, whether it be a driver's license or just a simple, uh, or, or just a Guam ID. Uh, the different types of ID, well, you know, those are things that we can be worked into with the agreement on how this would actually function with Department of Revenue and Taxation and of course with a Department of Education as well. The bill does not get into the specifics on how each department should provide what and, and when and where it should be. These are basically suggestions. The specifics of the, the requirements and the details that you're looking for will come with the cooperation of these two departments. Uh, will come from, uh, your input, uh, to your teachers, to your principals, to, uh, the division heads and until the, uh, director, uh, John Fernandez is satisfied and the deputy director is satisfied. And of course, with Department of Revenue and Taxation, uh, the, uh, your director there or the superintendent will be looking at the safety of your documentation. How can we protect that? We don't want that missing, just as we don't want your house keys missing or your wallet missing as well. But these are important documents that most students may only have one, one copy of. So how do we safely, safely do that? Uh, just like shop records too. There, there is a way that the, uh, uh, procedures can be put into place. Uh, we're allowing, uh, the, the education, uh, through the, through the teachers and through DOE to come up with those safety procedures. They do not want to see any of your documents missing, uh, because that, that's again, is going to be a disappointment and that's not the end result that we want to achieve. So allow, allow through the rules and regulations on how this process will be developed for that to be identified. Otherwise, if we put these kind of details into the bill, it's going to be like your thesis paper to your teacher at the end of the year or semester and nobody wants to read through all that stuff. We're not the experts you, you guys are, and that's why it's so helpful for having this information provided from you. Uh, so that your directors, uh, the superintendent can hear, so it can get passed on. And eventually this gets all put into committee notes and we can amend some of the, uh, parts of the bill to strengthen it and what you're exactly, uh, looking for. Uh, uh, like some of the ideas, I, I'll give, I'll give you some more information about this and my discussion with, uh, DRT and Daphne there is, um, was that maybe we can use some sort of a bussing system that we do for the, uh, folks. There's another uh, bill that became public law for the homeless to get free identification cards. And what is done is that the process is a bussing on a specific days of the month into DRT. Right? And, um, and there's some concerns that DRT also provided regarding, um, um, authorization for those of you under the age of eighteen. The bill mentions that we had to follow the rules and the regulations and, and so forth of, of DRT. And if that's the requirement, they're gonna put this into how this would actually work. If your parents need to be there or give an authorization slip, that's where DRT comes in. We do want to, don't want to circumvent any of the, uh, requirements or the authority of, of the parent on the minor. Uh, because that's, we're still the minors, right? And the responsibility of the parent, that rests upon, upon them. So all, all good points. Um, what I can say is really your points will be answered when this agreement comes forth within sixty days of the bill's passage, uh, with Department of Education and Department of Revenue and Taxation before any of this starts, but they have at least a couple of months to put it together. And your, your instructors are excited for this to happen because they really want their students to have their diploma and have their Guam ID so you can go out there and, uh, you know, begin your new exciting life. So hopefully, I, I don't mean to not answer any of your questions, but I think what you're looking for will be come, like, will come out in, uh, the regulations that they're putting together. So I, I want to thank you very much uh, for this opportunity and, uh, I'm, I'm glad you all wrote, uh, many of you wrote your testimonies and that will be part of the committee report. And your name will probably be mentioned out there and during session hall too. So this is just the start of being known for the rest of your life on how you made some changes. Uh, just where you're at today and what the different changes you can make in the future. So with that, I want to close. And I thank you, uh, Chairman Senator Nelson. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Moylan. I, I understand that there's a, a concern with the bill in, you know, like giving GDOE an additional tasking or an additional duty to fulfill. Uh, if this bill should pass to fulfill this type of legislation or the statute. And so, um, you know, the committee welcomes any recommendations from DRT. We did send an invite to, to them for this bill. Um, and even a DOE, if you'd like to also submit additional testimony on how we will move forward or how you recommend we move forward. Um, we are very much open to that. And so, um, I encourage you to do so because I don't, uh, GDOE is doing so much already. And I'd like to see, um, if there can be some kind of compromise where the principals or, you know, the superintendents, they don't have to, um, they're not being overwhelmed with having to navigate through COVID amongst other things and, and this, um, this additional duty. So we want to, we want to prevent that from being an additional duty. We want DRT to fulfill it. But we want to make it more accessible for the students. Right? So it's a win-win. So if you have any recommendations forward, then we can go ahead and, um, uh, continue to receive, receive testimony for the next ten business days. And then we will publish a committee report. Okay. Thank you very much. This will conclude our bill. We are now moving into the next bill, bill number one six, one five one dash thirty six. So our, our bill one five one dash thirty six is an act to amend Article Five of Chapter Sixty-Six, Title Twenty-One Guam Code Annotated, relative to modernizing the process and penal penalties in association with unsafe and derelict buildings and structures. Uh, so I believe we have our representatives, which is, uh, uh, DPW that is present today, if I can see where they're at here. DPW. Okay, there's Director Vince Ariola. Thank you very much for being with us, Director. And then I did also receive, um, a notice that the Guam Preservation Trust would be here. But I don't see them present in the, um, in the Zoom. So at this time, I would like to welcome Senator Moylan for his remarks on, on his bill.
Uh, thank you very much, Madam Chair. And, uh, thank you for the presence of those who are looking at testifying and participating in this public hearing with us today. So bill one fifty one thirty six core, as introduced by myself, is also co-sponsored by Senator Anthony Ada and Senator Christopher Duaneus and Senator Frank, uh, Los Jr. This bill is to amend, uh, an act to amend Article Five of Chapter Sixty-Six, Title Twenty-One Guam Code Annotated. It's relative to modernizing the process and penalties in association with unsafe and derelict buildings and structures. So the intent of this bill is basically we're looking at these unsafe buildings and modifying, uh, the bill so that the inspectors at Department of Public Works uh, can enforce reasonable timelines to these property owners of these derelict, uh, buildings uh, to recommend and re, uh, take care of the problem. Uh, likewise, we're looking at stringent, uh, penalties uh, so that Guam laws, uh, can be adjusted to address these, uh, either vacating these buildings or repairing or demolishing these unsafe structures with some timelines. That's what we see missing in the current law. So giving Department of Public Works uh, more teeth into this bill would, I think, or what we're looking at in the intent of this bill is to help our communities get, get, clean up our area. We know we have, uh, illegal dumping going on and we've seen a lot of abandoned buildings and properties where this is happening. Uh, and then of course, crash creates a whole bunch of other hazards as well. Also, these abandoned buildings, uh, some have led to illegal activities. And it's also reduced property value for, uh, nice neighborhoods. And it also will beautify, help Department of Public Works, uh, what they're really looking at is the beautification also in addition to public safety of our, of our different place, places. Uh, the mayor's council and mayors of different villages have been, uh, participating and giving lists of areas in their communities, uh, to DPW to look at, uh, addressing these abandoned building problems. DPW has also, uh, broken down a few of these buildings already and is looking at others, uh, to take care of as well. But what the bill does again is set timelines to assist DPW and penalties, uh, to place on the owners. So they're just not ignoring any of these, uh, requirements set by our government and we're trying to, uh, expedite the process. It's been going on for too long and I think this is, can be very helpful. So I looking forward to the discussion. I thank you, Madam Chair, uh, for this opportunity, uh, for the bill to move forward. Thank you very much.
So do us. Masi, Senator Moylan. Uh, we will now have, uh, testimony from Director of the Department of Public Works, Mr. Vince Ariola.
Hi. Good afternoon, uh, Senators. Um, uh, Madam Chair, uh, other senators, uh, with the, uh, with the thirty-six Guam legislature. My, for the record, my name is Vince Ariola. I'm the director here at the Department of Public Works. I see online, we have, uh, the sponsor Senator James Moylan, Senator Amanda Shelton. Good to see you, Senator, uh, fellow Tideway. Uh, Senator Tony Ada. And of course, the Chair Senator, uh, Talina Nelson. Uh, good to see you all and everything. Always, always good to, uh, appear before my old stomping grounds. Uh, again, on behalf of the Guam, uh, Department of Public Works, I'm here to, uh, offer some uh, comments and testimony on bill number one fifty-one, which seeks to amend Article Five of Chapter Sixty-Six, uh, relative to derelict buildings. Uh, as I understand, the intent is to update the process and penalties in association with addressing the island's unsafe buildings and structures that remain as nuisances throughout the island. Uh, at the onset, let me thank you and your colleagues for your unwavering support of the Islandwide Derelict Structures Project and acknowledging its importance in our beautification efforts. DPW staff have been working with the Lieutenant Governor's Islandwide Beautification Task Force and the Mayor's Council of Guam to ensure this project makes a difference throughout our island. With regard to specifics of the bill, I have a few comments that, um, hopefully warrant, uh, slight revisions. Uh, subsection six six five oh three requires that the building official, um, notify owners, post notices, et cetera, within ten days of our findings. With, uh, our current experience that we've been doing, uh, this project for the last several months, uh, sometimes we face, we are facing a sixty-day turnaround time for notices and postings. We were faced with issues that may include, uh, the property owners having passed. Uh, probate, probate may be, uh, pending, uh, lack of an appointed administrator, identifying the last legal owner of the properties, addresses are incorrect or may have changed, and sometimes government records, uh, may conflict. Uh, and if it's one thing, I, I recall at least in my previous experience, when you deal with land, uh, you, the record-keeping has to be exact. Uh, and, and, and the paperwork has to be, uh, uh, absolutely correct. So we have to always check and double-check, uh, uh, with regard to any, any type of, uh, issues, notice of violations or liens or whatever. Uh, we are gonna do with, with regard to this, 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 uh, project. Uh, with regard to penalties, we recommend a reasonable range of penalties with a minimum and a maximum amount. I know the bill calls for some, uh, uh, direct, uh, fines of like five thousand or ten thousand. Uh, what we're suggesting is, is maybe a range from anywhere from a, a thousand to ten thousand, depending on the severity of compliance, non-compliance. Uh, the repairs that may be needed, the demolition, uh, and, uh, you know, what other resources we may have to put into this. Uh, I believe we should also assume that some of these cases may find their way through the judicial system. And having this latitude and discretion helps both the government and the land, and the landowner. Uh, on the timelines for holding hearings, I recommend increasing the timelines as quite a number of owners reside off-island. Families may have to decide who will represent the owners if off-island or deceased. And like I mentioned earlier, sometimes we're dealing with probate and, and just a, a number of, of other issues. Um, you know, I, I think most of the, the, the hearings call for, I believe fifteen days. There's one that called for ten. I think if we just up at the, something a little bit, um, just, just a bit more reasonable, maybe twenty, twenty-five days, but no more than thirty, I think, would, would be, uh, more than adequate. Uh, once again, DPW supports the intent of bill one fifty-one. And we do understand the importance of the Islandwide Derelict Structure Program. We will continue to address these issues for the benefit and safety of our community, our environment and our island's future. And before I end, I, I, I do want to thank our staff who have been, uh, extremely diligent in, in going out, doing inspections. Because these aren't the good inspections that they do. They go to derelict buildings. So it's, it's, uh, they have to be concerned about their safety. They have to worry about homeless occupying the homes. Um, uh, stray animals, uh, they have to enter the jungle. So it, it, it gets tedious and, and it, it, it could be, uh, it could be dangerous, uh, at times as well. But, uh, so I do want to publicly acknowledge their, uh, their, their work and their efforts. Uh, thank you very much, uh, Senators. I would, uh, be happy to, uh, discuss the, um, the bill with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Ariola. I'll now open it up for, to, uh, my colleagues for any questions that they may have for the sponsor or for, uh, I guess just you. Uh, Senator Tideway, do you have any questions at this time or comments?
Uh, can you hear me?
It's, it's a little bit low.
Okay, yeah.
Can you speak into the mic?
Yeah, that's, um, my computer is, uh, acting up. Can you hear me okay now? Uh, I'll try and.
Yeah, just protect.
Yeah.
But it's audible, but it's not.
Yeah, it was just difficult. In fact, in the last bill, I was trying to say, hey, hey, I have a question. Uh, but it, it's okay.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, no worries. I, um, I was figuring that there's something wrong with my microphone, so I'll, I'll try and mount a different computer than my normal one, but I, I thank you for recognizing me and I'll, I'll try and speak as loud as I can. Good afternoon, uh, Director Ariola. Thank you so much for being here. You know.
Good to see you, Senator.
Same here, my friend. Same here. You know, I, I was concerned with, uh, with regards to property tax, that, um, or maybe might have done some research or, uh, already with regards to this, uh, legislation on what kind of data, if any, uh, regarding the number of crimes and/or injuries upon persons or other property which are directly attributed to the derelict structure. Have you done any data research from that?
No, Senator, uh, obviously, we, we don't have, uh, we don't have that kind of data and we haven't really, uh, looked into that because, you know, we, we're in a different lane. We, we just, we're just looking at the structure itself. Uh, how it looks, its, its physical condition, uh, what it means in terms of public health, public safety, uh, ingress, egress, uh, appearance, of course, uh, and, and, uh, basically lack of maintenance.
Okay. Well, uh, Vince, how about, uh, what information is known, uh, at this point concerning whether, um, real property taxes are, are current on properties that have been identified as derelict structures on, on site?
Yeah, we, we, we don't, we don't, we, I'll be honest, Senator, we don't even enter that, 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 that lane, if you will. We, we, uh, our, our, our jobs here with the, uh, derelict building is strictly, I guess, physical appearance, inspection. Um, you know, we, we don't, uh, do say, uh, what would you call it? Like a, um, uh, uh, preliminary title report, right?
Right, right.
Yeah, that, that would tell you if there's any other liens on it. Uh, we, we are, we're basically looking, uh, who the owners are, who the mortgages are, uh, and. Uh, and, and, and go after the owners of, of the uh, of the property.
Okay, so, um, so technically it would be revenue tax that has all that information then, right? Okay, so those properties with real tax uh, that remain outstanding for a certain period, the government authorized liens, you know, that for sale, it's, it's all under revenue tax. So Madam Chair, I think it's important that we also uh. Incorporate revenue tax into these, these discussions and moving forward. One of my biggest concerns is some of these buildings, um. You know, they've, they've done everything to secure the building, um. But you have squatters, individual squatters coming onto the property and then the owners call GPD. Uh, they remove the squatters and then they come back in and they just, you know, turn that place into a. You know, just like a, a dumping ground. Uh, you get mattress there and then for us to, you know, quickly be. You know, actually to just be quick at, you know, providing some kind of a. Penalty on them without really thoroughly uh, reviewing it. I think it needs a, a lot of help with that. You know, uh, Vince, maybe I can ask you, um, to what extent do you think EPA, Guam EPA involved with the identification of derelict uh, prop structures and. And uh, has the agency taken actions on any other property where they're involved or DPW's involved? Um.
It's, yeah, it's, it's basically ourselves and, and public health. For the, for the health aspect of it. Uh, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll bring in uh, EPA if there's a. If we believe there's a, there's a stench coming, uh, uh, maybe a leaking uh, sewer line or something uh, that, that, uh, you know. Or, or we, or we see some uh, oil or something. That, that may spill into the groundwater, things of that nature. Our sta, our staff knows who to contact, but uh, so far we haven't had that. It's, it's basically. Most of it is really just abandoned buil, buildings that have just been left, uh, left to the elements. That's really what we've been finding out there.
Okay, and I'm, so thank you, Madam Chair and Vince, you know, thank you for answering the questions. Look forward to some kind of data, you know, to justify any of this, you know, legislation moving forward. Though we have a few of them, but um. You know, I think it's important to have that. Information uh, moving forward. Thank you, Vince. Thank you, Madam Chair. Oh, and Madam Chair, just uh. You know, the last bill that was talked about, did that inc, also include charter schools? I, I'm sorry it was late for that public, uh, that hearing, but um, if anything, just to the question mark if charter schools are incorporated in that too as well for high school. Okay, that, that was, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Titigui. The, this was specifically for Guam Public High Schools and GDOE. Yeah, Bill one six three dash thirty six, it's in the, in the website. Okay, but we are not on that bill now. We are on another.
Thank you for indulging me, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Okay, um, we did send an invitation to Department of Revenue and Taxation uh, for this hearing. Okay, just so you're aware. Um, we will also send a, a letter to them asking them, they'd like to submit testimony for these bills. Senator Ada, are there any questions or concerns that you may have on, in regards to Bill one five one dash thirty six?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. No, I don't have no questions, so get with the author later on if we have any other issues or concerns. Nice to see you though, Vince.
Yeah, same here, Senator. Always good to see you. Thanks so much, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Ada, uh, Acting Vice Speaker, Senator Shelton.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thank you for your testimony, Director Ariola. I appreciate it. I was wondering if you can discuss um. A little bit more about uh, the fines and penalties that this bill is imposing. And how those will be uh, effective in um, in securing. These uh, properties when it sounds like the uh, biggest issue at hand is that we can't find the owners or these. Uh, properties are in probate, probate, or perhaps owner, this is a, a fine like this would be beyond the owner's means. Uh, what, what will we be able to accomplish in these situations with uh, these fines that are added on?
Uh, thank you very much, Senator. Excellent question. I think, I think one of the things we certainly have to understand, Senator, is that um, uh, not only are we de, dealing with private property. Or commercial property, but we're dealing with people. We're dealing with human beings and we're trying to. Get them to take action for something that belongs to them. Or something that, that, that belongs to them and they don't have the, the rightful means. Or they don't have the authority to do something like that. So. You throw it in the, if you throw this all into the pot for, for derelict buildings. And you could, uh, um, that, that's one of the reasons why we're having a number of delays. You know, as I just mentioned, it could be. Probate, uh, lack of an administrator, the individuals are off-island, uh, they don't have the, the financial resources. So I, I think what we're trying to do is, is we're, we're trying to find a balance. Here so that, so that someone does step up to the plate. And, and cleans up, cleans up the buildings. I can tell you an, an incident. We cited one of the owners. They happened to be somewhere in California. And, and that individual, she called a nephew here. Who in turn called me and said, to what extent do I need to clean up the house? Turns out he's my cousin also. So I said, well, this is what you gotta do. Cut the grass, board up the windows, give the, 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 the house a coat of paint and just make it look presentable, which they did. And that was fine. We were, we were fine with that. Uh, there are others who, uh, some of them have no interest in the property anymore. Uh, some of them don't have the resources for it. So, you know, we're trying to find a balance. What's gonna make them? Move and, and what's gonna ma, move, make them uh, uh, act. To, to, to clean up the house, uh, make it presentable and also to protect it from, from homelessness. Uh, from vagrants, from uh, stray dogs and stray cats. So that's why I think when it, when it comes for, for the penalties. You know, and, anywhere from a, a thousand to a thousand, uh, ten thousand dollars, that, you want that kind of range. So that uh, you know, we, well, either I can assign that range or if it does get to, to the judicial system, the judge has some discretion. Uh, and some leeway to, to, to attack that, uh, the, the issue there. Um. Uh, you know, because there, there, there are some people who, you know, they just don't have the resources. But they, they, the, on the other hand, they just need time to get their resources together and get that, that house or that building uh. Renovated or put it up for sale. You know, I, I think the best thing, and the thing we tell all of them is. It's no different than a bank. When a bank's about to repossess your home, you've gotta communicate with the bank. Because if you just, if you just, and, and that's the other thing. If you just uh, ignore whatever the notices of violations are. The government, on the other hand, has to have a, a, a Plan B, a Plan C, you know, step two, step three, step four, step five. Otherwise. They're just gonna think, ah, the gov, governor, the government just gave me this notice of violation. And they didn't do anything on the forty-fifth day, so I guess I'm off the hook. Uh, we do not want that to happen because, because then, then this, this, this whole project will not succeed. So we're very careful with that to make sure that we follow up. Once uh, once that thirty days uh, uh, passes that we, we call them up, we find out where they are with it. Uh, do they need to come in? Do we need to talk with them? Do they need more time? We've extended some. We were able to extend some. And, and, and rightfully so. They, they, they fixed up their, their buildings, but. You know, uh, just about every case is different. You know, and so uh, we, we, we have to, we have to realize that as well, that every case is different. There's different circumstances uh, regarding the ownership of the property and getting it, getting it safe and secure. Uh, to, 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 to our standards, so it doesn't become a nuisance or a derelict building.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. Okay, thank you very much for that. And uh, with these uh, increased uh, fines and penalties uh, that are proposed in the bill. Uh, can you tell us, or what happens to these funds when they are collected? Where are they deposited and is specifically to be used within the department?
Uh, good point. Yeah, I'll be honest, I, I think, uh, we're, we're, we're so busy trying to implement it, we don't, we don't even. Uh, we're, we're not that uh, we're, we're not that concerned right now about where the money goes. We just want to make sure I go out there and take care of the building. So. I'll be honest, I'm gonna have to take a look at that. Uh, it might come into the building. Building uh, um, the BDF, the Building Design Fund. I, I'd have to check back uh, on, on, on that for you, Senator. Uh, and we're, we're so caught up in just getting the, the, taking care of the derelict buildings that, you know, the, 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 the fine is, is not, uh, we're not headed for the fines. But I think the fines are, you know, fines always make people move.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, well, okay, yes. So thank you very much if you can look into that. And I think that, uh, that I would recommend that we specify that in the bill, that it goes directly into that fund to be used for. Uh, enforcement or be used for cleaning up whatever these properties are, some, something of that nature that we can.
Do we turn it around?
Mm-hmm, exactly. And then, um. Yeah, thank you very much. And then I wanted to discuss the uh. Section six six five zero seven, uh, which has to do with persons violating. Uh, I guess, people who are entering the unsafe structures, right? So we're assuming these are probably homeless individuals who. Uh, in the law right now can be fined up to one thousand dollars. And now we're adding on. Uh, an additional punishment here, which is to require them to perform community service, not to exceed one hundred hours. And I'm. Uh, really concerned about uh, this uh, provision of the bill. Uh, for us to further penalize a person who is, um, you know, in a, in a dire situation. A homeless individual or a homeless family that is seeking shelter. Uh, I understand that this is a, a, a means of restorative justice to include community service. Uh, but uh, perhaps we can reassess the thousand-dollar fine. Or uh, discuss this a little bit more if this is the best option for us because. Uh, I'm not sure exactly what the Department of uh, Public Works is doing in conjunction with. The Department of Public Health and Social Services. I'm sure you have, you, you discussed it a little bit. The, the partnership that you have to uh, help these homeless individuals, but. Uh, I, I don't know if this is the, the right way to go, if we're going to find them and require them to community, do community service, if this is the best way that we can help our community. That's one of my concerns. I don't know if you want to speak to that.
Yeah, you could, you could do it or, you know, uh, I'm, I'm, uh, I, I, I won't hedge my bets, but I'm almost certain the, the. The homeless individuals out there don't, don't really have a thousand dollars ready to, ready to spend. So you could put them on community service and I, I do like the, the fact that the uh, the, the bill uh, calls for the service. To be conducted under the supervision of DPW. Because I think I've mentioned at our, our budget hearing, we've, we've gotten into an agreement with the local, the, the judiciary of Guam for their um. Um, their, their, their uh, customer, the, what, what is it? Their, their, uh. The individuals who are, are, are guilty of misdemeanors and are, who are uh, required to perform community service, right? And so we've uh, we've uh, we've asked them to be sent over here and what we're finding out is uh. They're opting to go more to mayor's offices or some other agency because they know when, when they come here, they're gonna be. Given a dull machete and they're gonna be asked to go out there and clean the roadside. So when they come to DPW, you know, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna put you folks to work. So uh, uh, sadly, we haven't gotten any, uh, any takers coming here.
All right, well.
You know, again, for this, you know, it's just the fact that it says uh, conducted under the supervision of Department of Public Works. I'm, I'm all for that.
Yeah, okay, so maybe we can think about uh, removing that pedal, the fine and uh, seeing. In, in addition to um, uh, the community service, how we are actually helping these individuals, um, you know, find some sustainable housing. Uh, can you discuss a little bit about what you do with uh, public health when you uh, come across an individual who is. Um, a homeless individual staying in one of these properties?
Um. I believe that there's the, the, um, there's the homeless coalition, uh, uh. Uh, um, what's her name? Sarah Thomas Nettadog. She handles that for the governor's office. So we, we contact her and, and uh, they have their own processes and everything. So they, 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 they take it from start to finish. We just identify. Sometimes though, you know, we'll identify homeless and by the time you come back, they're gone. Uh, you know, I don't need to tell you, homeless are very mobile here in Guam. Uh, you know, you can chase them out of a structure for maybe a week or, or two, as Senator James Moylan knows. But as soon as you ta, you turn your back uh, and, and, and not visit the site, they'll, they'll, they'll find a way to come back.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Thank you, Madam Chair, for your time.
Thank you, thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Shelton. Okay, there are no other questions or comments from my colleagues. I'll offer the floor to. Senator Moylan to close on this bill. And thank you, Director Ariola, for your time giving to.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Madam, Madam Chair. Uh, I, I appreciate my colleagues' questions specific to the bill. Uh, again, the bill is uh, regarding. Adding the fines, which uh. Um, Mr. Vince Ariola, Director, was very helpful and, and giving good ideas to give some sort of leeway, especially when it comes to judiciary. I think we're really open to looking at that. As well, and to include that timeframe. Uh, so right now, we're adding these objects into the current law, which don't currently exist. So uh, through conversation with the, the director, this is how this bill came about. So we're just, we're just looking at those two things. Timeframe and uh, amount, which the director was very helpful in giving some good suggestions to that. Uh, and, and thank you, Senator Shelton, for also pointing that out as well. I think it was maybe Vince or a representative at, of DPW when we read that parking structure, Vince, recall that. Uh, across our church there, down, down in Tumon. Well, we did also have Sarah Thomas Nettadog uh, there. Uh, in case the, of the situation, just further explaining the services available. Uh, one thing I do recall from Miss Nett, Mrs. Nettadog is that these are the hardest folks to find. Residents for, uh, the most difficult group to work with. But possibly there could be the one just out in bad luck and, and then we can find them something, but majority of them are in that situation. Uh, but it doesn't. That doesn't prevent us from asking. And so we did reach out also to um, uh, Miss, Mrs. Nettadog too and. Looks like she wasn't able to come. However, we'll be sure to get some statement from, from them. Uh, Director Ariola, maybe, you know, with that situation of Waikiki Apartments, the one right next to my place down in Tumon, that you were successful to. Leveling it to the ground. It's been, how many years since that place has been there? Do you recall possibility of how, how long that's been there?
Oh, I, 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 I wouldn't even venture to say, but it, it, uh. It was a, it was a waste and unfortunately it was a very good-looking building. Unfortunately, you know, it just went by the wayside.
Right, and I, uh, since my stay right next door to that, that place burned four times, ambulances would come as well. But again, this bill, uh, as you said, with the amendments that you're asking us to put in, will give DPW the, the ability to really. Um, do the right thing. Uh, not necessarily find anybody out of the. Out of a livelihood or uh, not uh, looking for other places for folks to stay in the meantime. But really to be able to do their job and that's, that's what the bill is all about. So I think with, with that, Madam Chair, I'm, I'm really appreciative and I'm uh, looking forward to seeing how we can help strengthen this bill. As the, in the committee with the amendments as recommended. So, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Director, and thank you, colleagues.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Moylan. And with that, this concludes our public hearing. The community, the committee will continue to accept written testimony for the next ten business working days. Ten working days. And you can send that to Senator TC Nelson at GuamLegislature.org. Or you can deliver it to our office at Suite two oh two Alpha one seven three Espinal Avenue. Hakkat near Guam nine six nine one zero. All right, thank you very much, everyone. It is now four oh nine in the afternoon. Have a wonderful day. God bless you and take care. Bye-bye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.